It's 6:30. So with that, I want to make two announcements. One, we are live captioning our meetings, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning if that's your desire. Also, I'd like to say that we have with us tonight our incoming Student Advisory Board member, Mr. Quentin Evans. He will be sitting in on this meeting in preparation for his term, which begins on July 1, 2021. So welcome, Mr. Evans. We're glad to have you with us this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, deep breaths, and here we are. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'm going to call to order the public hearing of the Maricopa County Community College District. We're here to take and read public comment regarding the proposed budgets for Gateway, Early College, High School, Fiscal Year 2021 and 22, 21, 22, and Phoenix College Prep Academy Fiscal Year 21, 22. Just for the record, I want to acknowledge board members are present for the public hearing. And just to go down the list, Ms. Munoz, are you present with us? Ms. Bittersmith?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. I see she's still on mute.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Narini?
I'm here.
Great, welcome back. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
Thank you. My presence, all board members are here and present for the public hearing. Elza, do you have anyone who has indicated and wished to comment at our tonight's public hearing?
No, I'm in the window right now, and there's nothing there.
Okay, so with that, there being no comments for public hearing this evening, we'll move on, and I will conclude the public hearing portion of this meeting. And we will go forward into our regular meeting after you give us an update on the Sun Score, someone.
12, 13 suns are up.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, everyone, before I pull into the regular meeting, we've adjourned the public hearing, we're moving on. But as you can tell, there are some folks who are pretty excited about the Phoenix Suns being in the run to be in the Western, or represent us in the Western Conference finalist. And so it's all go Suns all the way. And we have our mascot, John, who is wearing a wonderful Suns t-shirt. For those of you who are not wearing a Suns t-shirt, I'm going to assume that you still are in the mix as Suns supporters, and we'll go forward from there. But thank you for our patience this evening, and we'll get you to the game as soon as we can, folks. But we want to do the business of the district as well as we can while we're anticipating a win. So with that, Mrs. Elza, do you have a comment you're choosing to make?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Ms. Munoz is here. She's joined us.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Munoz, so now I'm going to call to order the regular... Excuse me? Okay. There's some background noise there. I'm going to ignore that and call us to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for June 22, 2021. Welcome, all of you who are on the call. Delighted to have you with us this evening. For the record, I'm going to call roll vote of board members for the purpose of attendance at the regular meeting. So with that, Ms. Munoz, are you present? Ms. Bittersmith?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Narini?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
Thank you. And with my presence, all seven board members are present for the regular meeting. Elza, I heard you indicate Ms. Munoz was present with us. I didn't hear her say she was present.
Yes, it seems that she dropped off, though I don't know if she's trying to reconnect at the moment.
Okay, we'll move forward anyway at this time. So I do want to note on the agenda that we have some substitutions this evening. Dr. Donna Young, VP of Student Affairs at Scotts Community Colleges, present. And Dr. Doug Berry, Vice President at Paradise Valley Community College, is also present. There's no Faculty Executive Council report this evening, and for adjunct Faculty Association report, Dr. Train submitted a written report and requires no speaking time. With that, I'd like to move to the interim Employee Senate report. Ms. Chandler and Ms. Majae, you have the floor. Or the speaker.
Thank you. President Sullivan, Members of the Board, Chancellor Gonzalez, Member of CEC and guests. My name is Shannon Monge. I'm an Administrative Specialist Senior at Paradise Valley Community College for the Academic Affairs Division. I am before you as the co-chair of the Interim Employee Senate. Along with me is my other co-chair and esteemed colleague, Anna Chandler, Student Services Analyst for the ACE Program at Scottsdale Community College. Next slide, please. As always, we'd like to begin with a little bit of welcome and gratitude. We would like to give an extreme shout out to our MNO and COVID Task Force teams who have been providing safe environment to our campuses, and they are working very hard as we begin to all return to our work sites in the upcoming weeks and months. What we ask of all of our staff and faculty across Maricopa is to please plan accordingly and be patient with our MNO and facilities teams as we return. Please put your facilities tickets in well in advance so their teams can plan accordingly with their day-to-day operations. Another thing to be well aware of is to work with your facilities regarding large amounts of recycling and shredding as we clean out our file drawers that have been left unattended for the last couple of years. Please maintain flexibility and understanding with your COVID liaisons and task force at your sites as we know that the COVID regulations are changing frequently. As well as a huge shout out to our IT, our police officers, our public safety workers for keeping our campuses safe and maintaining communication with all those that return to the sites. A huge shout out to our graduation committees as all of the graduation celebrations went off without error. Our students enjoyed them, and it was wonderful to celebrate the successes that we saw. And thank you to all of our day of support staff and workers that are helping our students and community members as they return to the sites. Next slide, please. We would like to give a huge shout out and a huge thank you to serving for those who served in EGOC Phase 1 and EGOC Phase 2. If y'all remember, pre-pandemic, we served as the employee group's organizing council under the guidance of Elliot Hibbs and Georgia Kelly. These are the folks listed before you that served during that time and laid the framework for employee representation. It was crucial, and we thank you all. Next slide, please. We would like to say thank you, with maybe a tear rolling down my cheek, that these folks who have served on your Interim Employee Senate will be ending their term come June 30th. These folks served during a pandemic, during an IT outage. They were there to support students and staff while also taking care of themselves and loved ones. They got us through a difficult year, and we could not have done it without them. Whether they are moving on outside of Maricopa or staying within Maricopa to get extremely important work done, we thank you, and we look forward to seeing all the great work that you do. Next slide, please. The folks that you see listed on the screen right now will be continuing to serve in various capacities for employee representation for the next academic year. Some of these folks have served one year, some of these folks have served two. That just goes to show you the amount of trust that they have instilled in staff at their local sites to continue to serve in this next coming year. I believe the continuity that they will offer and the experience that they have will make for great things in the next year to come. I look forward to working with them all, as I'm sure Anna does as well. Next slide, please. The names on the screen before you are all of the newly elected employee representatives for the upcoming academic year. We have had recent meetings with some of these folks, and I know that they are so excited to serve students and staff in this upcoming year, and I'm so looking forward to the new creative, innovative, collaborative initiatives that they will bring for students and for staff. All of the names that you have seen are available on our website, which you will see on the last slide, so please check it out, find out who's serving on your site, and reach out to them, share your ideas and collaborate. I look forward to working with all of you. 21, 22 will be an amazing academic year. I now turn it over to my co-chair, Anna.
Thank you so much, Shannon, and for your shared enthusiasm. I definitely agree. We are very excited as we continue to represent employees and moving forward. One great accomplishment on the 14th and 15th of June was our continuity team did a phenomenal job of onboarding all of the new representatives that you just saw on the last slide. Some of the material that we went over in the training was our bylaws. As we continue to grow and build, we wanted to go ahead and update and get people, get our new representatives familiar with what our bylaws are and how we're looking to move forward. Eddie Jenna came in and worked with us on interest-based negotiation and shared governance so that we could start to model the way and become a leading force as far as shared governance goes and how we work within the Senate to solve problems and do better for employees within the district. And last but not least, also introduced our policy team and committees that we have currently within the Senate and what we're really looking to do to move forward so that we have a promising future, as well as just the continuity of what is our goals, what have we learned, and how are we going to progress and move forward. So it was a really wonderful training. It was two long days of eight-hour trainings, but we got through it. We remained strong, and so we're really excited for our new representatives moving forward. Next slide, please. And last but not least, as we're returning to campus and the conversation obviously is becoming more alive as we start to return to our campuses and become safe into our environments again, many staff are excited to return and are work and also excited to be working remotely. As we continue to serve students, a lot of people are seeing their work progression at this time as we see more students engaging. And so whether we're working remotely or coming back to campus, we're all very excited to serve students and see faces and continue to do the amazing work that all staff is doing. It is really important to staff that we do not correlate low enrollment to staff working remotely. A lot of people have created amazing programs and have had great success and progression with students, even virtually, and we're continuing to, we're excited to continue to serve students as best we can, no matter what method of delivery. Everyone plays a huge role in enrollment, and we did want to recognize that for staff. So whether you're in a recruitment team, or you're a frontline staff, you're in financial aid, groundskeepers, everyone is so crucial to the success of us having high enrollment and making sure that students feel engaged and welcome on our campuses. And we just want to make sure that everyone knows that whether you're remote or in person, we all play a huge role. Last, campuses have had small crews operating on our sites for months now, and we thank those who have started leading the pathways for us to return to work safely and just have been assisting students face-to-face as needed. And then last, just to acknowledge, we really want to appreciate staff that, for all of us being remote and just working in overdrive, so many people have flipped programs, made sure that services continued as needed, and have really created a model that we can continue to use moving forward so that whether we're serving students online or face-to-face, our district will continue to move forward and connect with students. Next slide. If you have any questions, we would take them at this time, but thank you so much for listening to our update, and we look forward to a new year with new representatives and new initiatives. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler and Ms. Majae, for your report this evening. And though we won't take questions, I will comment that your presentations this year have been great, and I'm glad to know that we have so many of the staff on the calls, listening to our board meetings, and they're all welcome, and I know they're encouraged by your representation. So thank you for that, and we'll see you in August. With that, there are no student life reports. And on the agenda, I want to acknowledge that tonight we have two Emeritus Awards. And as, again, I've stated at previous meetings, as we begin to establish a new normal process again across our system, one area where we've begun returning to recognizing is to return to recognize the outstanding contributions of our faculty as they retire from our system. So following the board meeting, in which we have honorees such as this evening, we will include an article recognizing the recipients in the Merrick Copan Newsletter that will include a short profile of each recipient. Elza Macias, our board assistant, will forward the newsletter to all of the recipients. We're hopeful that once we're able to celebrate distinctions in a more formal manner, that we will do so sometime in the future. So that's an exciting opportunity to look forward to. And with that, I'll move to the chancellor report. And Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I've got a couple of comments. President Sullivan, Members of the Board, CEC and guests, thank you for the opportunity to provide a very brief update. One of them is a legislative agenda update. It's been a marathon legislative session at our state capitol, and we suspect that the end is near, maybe as early as end of the week. The legislature is currently in the process of debating and passing their fiscal year 2022 budget. The current budget includes $4 million for Maricopa Community Colleges for STEM projects, which is an increase from the $1.6 million appropriation from the last fiscal year. And while we continue to advocate for full funding and believe this advocacy may result in additional funding beyond the current amount, is anticipated that the legislature will conclude the regular session this week. So please look out for a detailed session summary in the upcoming weekly snapshot. The second part of my update includes a very brief one on enrollment. At minus 10 weeks before the start of the fall semester, headcount is down 5.6%, and footsie is down 7.6%. And we are doing things to improve this, and colleges have made some drastic improvements over the last few weeks. With the runway ahead of us, we hope to turn these numbers from negatives to positives soon. I'd like to highlight, in fact, that one of the colleges has got some tremendous growth over last year in its Gateway. It was experiencing a 23.1% increase in headcount and a 29% increase in footsie. So clearly, there are some things that we may be able to learn that Gateway is doing and apply across our system. Rio Salado is one of the other colleges that is experiencing a positive headcount increase at 1.9%. So again, this information will be shared in our weekly snapshot. I just wanted to let you know that we're on top of this and making some movement towards this to improve enrollment. I want to thank the faculty, staff, administration, and leadership for closing out another fiscal year. Looking forward to our face-to-face meetings beginning in August with our, for our board meetings. We've had some face-to-face meetings in form of retreats here recently, and I just have to share that it feels a little unusual when you, when you come back and begin to meet with your colleagues face-to-face. And so I just ask that we have grace for one another and continue to practice our health and safety when we're around one another. And since we're not meeting in July, I just want to say thank you to our governing board for providing leadership during a very challenging year. And I think that we are a better organization today than we have been in our past, and we continue to improve. I hope that you all and I hope that also our employees and students get an opportunity to relax and reflect at some point this summer so that we can come back ready to ramp up for the fall and spring semester for what should be a much better academic year than what we've experienced in terms of dealing with a pandemic. That concludes my remarks. President Sullivan, thank you.
Thank you. And do you have a sun's update, Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, at the start of the second quarter, 10 minutes in or 10 minutes remaining, your Phoenix Suns are leading the LA Clippers 29 to 23.
Oh, good report. And the rest of your report was great, too. So thank you. And certainly, I want to acknowledge that those are critically important things that you talked about, and we're looking forward to more comment on the legislative activity as we come back together in August and September. And we're hoping for the best based on good strategies around enrollment. And I would like to say thank you for you, your leadership and the staff's leadership this fiscal, fiscal and academic year, and hope you find some time to relax and reflect as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So with that, everyone, there is, I've noticed that there is no one interested to speak during citizens' interim. So I'm going to move us directly to consideration of the consent agenda. So I want to note that all items under this section are consent matters unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. So do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any items from the consent So long pause. So I'm not hearing any interest to do so. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved. This is, this is when? Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Thor.
Thor.
Yeah, thank you. With that, I'm going to, all in favor, just please say aye, since all board members are present. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Being none, the consent agenda as presented is approved 7 to 0, 7-0 with all board members present. So next question, again, I just need an aye, and then I'll ask if anyone is opposed. Would members of the board approve the use of their electronic signature on the approved fiscal year 21, 22 budgets for Gateway and Early College, High School, and Phoenix College Prep? I believe we've done some of this already, but just in case, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? There being none, the full board has given their approval as individuals for use of the electronic signature in that process. So thank you, board members. So there are no non-consent action items. There, are there any comments or questions on the first reading and information items presented this evening and the agenda? Being none, then again, any comment on the monitoring report of the Budget Analysis Report Okay, there being none, and moving us to our last item on community linkage. And this is again up to the board members to give a brief report on their activity or anything else. So Ms. Bittersmith, I'll start with you.
Thank you, President Sullivan. I just briefly would say I participated in the ACTT Pacific Region Virtual Meeting last week in preparation for better understanding the activities that will be coming for education and discussion with fellow board trustees at their October meeting. That is it.
Thank you.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. Dr. Narini?
No real report. I just want to thank Ms. Munoz for her service this year, and welcome, Mr. Evans, to the, to the board. So welcome, and thank you, and just want to wish everybody a happy Juneteenth.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to say I hope everyone enjoys the break. Thank you to the student representatives. I don't have any additional reports.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I do have a few things to comment on, and I feel like I'm under a great deal of pressure given the Suns game, so I'll talk fast.
Take a deep breath. You're good.
I want to compliment Dr. Gonzalez. I want to compliment Dr. Gonzalez and his team for the state-of-the-district presentation, which I thought was absolutely excellent, and I hope is a new tradition for us. And I also want to express my appreciation for including me and giving me the opportunity to share some history around the community college baccalaureate. I also want to thank Rio Salado for including me in their virtual high school equivalency graduation. I thought the ceremony was extremely well done. I also had the opportunity to be one of two guests in an hour-long segment on KTAR's Thank Tank with Dr. Mike O'Neill, again, providing history of the community college baccalaureate and some of our plans for the future. I also attended the ACTT Pacific Region Meeting. And then today, I attended along with Ms. Sullivan and Dr. Gonzalez, the AACCT's virtual event on micro macro trends shaping higher education, transforming the business model. And I was very pleased that Maricopa is already addressing most, if not all, of the trends that the presenter cited. And I also want to thank all of our employees for the great job that they did this year, and wish everyone a relaxing summer. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Mrs. Nguyen?
I'm good. No report. Thank you.
You're welcome. So it's my turn, and I have, I also feel under some pressure, Dr. Thor, to give my part. But as we move on, you, a couple of you have mentioned our student advisory member, and I believe Ms. Munoz is with us now on the phone. And Ms. Munoz, I'd like to direct some comments to you. I know that it's been a really tough year personally for you on occasion, and certainly managing school and family and other issues during a pandemic has been difficult. But one thing I do know is that you've paid attention to our interests and our agendas, and I know you did a great job representing the student body to not only the board, but in reverse order, representing us to your constituents and fellow students. So I wanted to thank you for your year of service, and also want to let you know, if we were present, I would be able to do this upfront and personal, but we do have an acknowledgement for you that when we see you, we'll be more than delighted to hand off and shake your hand. But to the community out there listening, Ms. Munoz will receive a plaque from us, and I want to read to you what it will say, and then give you an opportunity, Ms. Munoz, if you choose to offer any comment. It will read, "The Maricopa Community Colleges Governing Board extends to Ms. Yulisa Munoz our heartfelt thanks and appreciation for your year of service as our Student Advisory Board Member 2020 to 2021." So thank you so much. It's been a crazy academic year for everyone, and particularly, I know, our students and for you, but you, you were a stalwart companion through all of this. So, so thank you for your service. And this is your opportunity, if you'd like to offer any comment or not, that's your choice.
Thank you. I was present the whole meeting. I don't know why it just wasn't letting me talk or anything, so my apologies for that. But I did want to say thank you for, you know, allowing me to be able to represent the student body and also, you know, make sure that the student voice is heard. I know that that's something that, you know, it is something that not many other colleges, universities, or even different school districts get the opportunity to have. And for that, I am so thankful for Maricopa. I'm thankful for Maricopa as a whole. I think that from the beginning that I started here, you know, just as a student, not involved in any extracurriculars, to slowly trickling into different clubs and different activities, it really has changed me, has changed my leadership skills, and I am very so grateful for that. I also want to say... I also want to say a huge thank you to everybody on the board because over this last year, I really got to know how much you guys care about the students. You know, I think that that sometimes isn't very seen by students or, you know, by everybody else because we don't really get to see behind the curtain and all the other meetings that go on. But I really learned that I think every single one of you guys that sits on this board has a true passion for the students and, you know, wants the best interest in the students. And I also want to thank you guys because this last year, like you said, not only for myself, but for many students, it was a very difficult year. I know I lost quite a bit of family members due to the pandemic, but I know many others have lost people, too. And I think Maricopa did an amazing job in trying to comfort students and assisting them in different ways, whether it was, you know, with providing extra financial help, also finding different ways to continue to offer those resources that we did while being on campus, which was amazing. You know, I know many students who tried giving it a shot, you know, doing online classes, who that isn't their preferred way of learning. And I think the faculty and teachers did an amazing job as well, you know, being patient with the students because I think this was something that was new to all of us. And we kind of just locked it together. So I know, you know, there wasn't many events or, you know, big things for the students, but I hope to get together with Quentin and pass along my ideas for things to come. And, you know, I, I know that I will be leaving, you know, my position to someone amazing, not just because he's MCC, too, but any other reasons. I, you know, I was, I met Quentin when he first started. He kind of trickled in my own shoes, starting as a student senator and now moving into the student board position. So I'm very excited for him. I'm very excited for what he is going to do. And for all of you board members continuing to, you know, lead our district, lead our community colleges, because I know you, that they are in great hands. So I appreciate all of you.
Well, Ms. Munoz, thank you so much for your, your comments. And certainly, we wish you the best as you move forward. We hope to see you in person, and maybe we can bring you back for a meeting when we're also convening together. It was difficult, I know, given that all of our meetings essentially were virtual. But we know that everyone did their best in this environment, and that certainly includes you. So you know that we have offered our sympathies on, on the impact to your family as a result of the pandemic. But we're also applauding under our mute buttons your future and extend our best wishes to you. And so congratulations on your conclusion of your years with us and best wishes as you move forward. Thank you for your service. So folks, just a couple of things. I also wanted to echo Dr. Thor's comment on the State of the District. I thought it was very well done, appreciated the effort, and certainly recognize all the award winners for the efforts on the community colleges behalf. Another great effort, and it was very well done, very professional. And I saw there were hundreds of people in the audience for that. So our community is interested in what we're doing and certainly appreciate the information. So congratulations to you, Dr. Gonzalez, and all the teams that worked on, on that effort. Want to also acknowledge that as we close out this fiscal year, there's been incredible work done by everyone on staff. The faculty has made outstanding contributions. The staff has done tremendous work in ensuring that we always had information when we needed it and in timely manners and supporting our students overall. It's been, again, I don't want to keep repeating an idea, but it was a successful year. And it was because of the efforts of everyone working together to achieve success for our students on their behalf, but also to keep our district moving and on top of agendas and efforts that will make the education community greater because of our, our efforts. And with that, also, Dr. Gonzalez, want to acknowledge your best wishes to everyone and to the board to comment that it is a time during this hiatus to relax and to reflect on our purpose and regroup. When we come back in August, we'll be coming back strong. The board will have a retreat to present. There's going to be strategic priorities to address. We'll be looking at more efforts on behalf of our entire community. And I expect that those few months remaining in the calendar year will go quite quickly. But want to ensure that we're all ready and prepared. So again, deep breaths, relax, reflect, and we'll convene. Again, I do have a reminder that in this season of hiatus, business doesn't stop. And it is very possible that there will be emails and such. So I've asked Ms. Flores, if she's present, to offer us some comments about what we should remember while we're on hiatus and doing our work. So with that, Ms. Flores, are you present with us?
I am. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm doing well. Thank you.
All right. So President Sullivan and members of the governing board, I just wanted to issue a reminder regarding the opens meetings law, open meetings law, pardon me, and emails, social, social media posts and in-person visits that you may have. Just remember that it's very easy to step into a gray area or into dangerous waters with respect to communication that you're having if there is any kind of a discussion or specific to discussing, proposing, or, or taking legal action, including any deliberations with regarding, with regards to actions that will be taken at a board meeting that could constitute, that will constitute a violation of the open meetings law. So in your emails, please be very cognizant of this. If you meet with other board members outside of a meeting in, in person, please remember that you aren't to discuss anything that are, offer any opinions on things that the board will be voting on. And also with social media posts, that you're not posting things that could potentially be viewed as offering your opinion on a matter that will be going before the board. And I just, I just wanted to make that very short and sweet and let you know that I hope you all have a wonderful rest and disconnect from the work that you do here. And to thank you for all the work, the hard work that you do for us.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. And again, this is our hiatus period, so I'm hoping that we have an opportunity to truly take that time. But in the event that people start communicating, sometimes it's easy for us to forget the, the rules. And so I appreciate you bringing that up to us this evening. So with that, I would like to also say to everyone, I sit on the Arizona, excuse me, Association of Governing Boards Council of Chairs, and we'll have a couple of those meetings within the next month. Also, sitting with the council presidents on a couple concerns and issues as a representative on the council of board chairs. And we'll be thinking hard of how we can even do our work more impactfully and better as we resume together in the new fiscal and academic year. So when we next meet, whereas right now scheduled for October, excuse me, August 17th at 4:00 PM for an agenda review meeting, I'm not sure if there'll be a work session attached to that or not. We will conduct that meeting on WebEx. And then we will move the following week to our regular scheduled board meeting. Right now scheduled for 6:30. Again, I don't know if there'd be any work session prior to that. And that one, we're going to be in person at the district center and in the governing board room. Hallelujah, finally. We might have to, you know, celebrate being together. So with that, those are what's coming up. So take some deep breaths, go and enjoy the rest of the Suns game and know that we'll convene in August. And with that, everyone, may you all enjoy your summer. And thank you, everyone, for your outstanding contributions, both in the past and as we look forward to serving our district. So good night, everyone. And before we go, what's the score?
Forty-six to forty-three Suns.
Okay, well, we're making progress. All right, everyone, let's go. Go Suns. Good night, everyone. Happy summer. Thank you.